Let the legions do the flag, United States of America. To the republic which stands on creation, under God, and with legal liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, we'll call the Exeter Town Council Special Meeting for Wednesday, August 16th, 2023, to order. So, correct please take the role.
Dan Patterson.
Here.
Frank Cabe.
Here.
Allois.
Here.
And we, we're going to be Francisco.
Here.
And Diana Hamon.
Here.
Okay, number three is meeting with the Department of Health regarding elevated levels of PFAS. I'm not even trying to pronounce that word, drinking water at the former Ladd School Center, Exeter, Rhode Island. And starting now, we're going to have presentation and briefing by members of the Rhode Island Department of Health who are all here.
Thank you. Hi, all. We need department to, to Rhode Island Department of Health, not for being able to follow you in chief and administrator. And I'll, we can start with introductions, but Allois also here, and then we'll talk to the agenda and get to the slides. We did pass out presentation materials, so that's what we'll be following. To my rights, Dr. Mike Burns.
Hi, I'm Michael Burns. I'm the principal toxicologist at the Department of Health, so I'm the main person for the toxic effects of anything.
Hi, I'm Kathy Feeney, and I'm the division director for environmental health.
I'm Neil Hayden. I'm the website liaison and authority of the Department of Health, so work on the state legislation and then also monitoring federal legislation.
I'm Nick Nunes. We're at D E M now with, with the Office of Land Realization, with the Superfund and Department Defense Group. I've dealt with a lot of PFAS investigation from state.
I'm Susan Force here. I'm the deputy director for environmental protection for D E M.
Jill Heberak, I'm the administrative surface water protection at D E M.
I got Dory.
Go right ahead.
All right, great. So we'll start with an overview of PFAS. We're on, this is slide three, page two of our presentation, the agenda. Start with the overview of PFAS, getting into the rounds, state law requirements, the findings of testing for PFAS in Rhode Island. Findings of testing for PFAS in Exeter specifically, next steps, and then we'll have a question and answer. Kathy, open that to any questions. So, Dr. Burns here is going to start us off, and then I'll finish us off with the end slides.
So, going on to the next slide. Current polyfluoral alcohol substances, which we'll call PFAS because it's a lot easier. Are, they're these very useful chemicals. They show up in all kinds of different products. They're used to make things waterproof or grease resistant, so like Sea Master Carpet or a variety of different products. So they showed, they've shown up in all kinds of things in your house. They're also used in firefighting foam and some other variety of industrial processes. And so through this, as you're using it at home, it can break down and get into wastewater. As you're, it's being used other places or as industry is using it, they often emit it as air pollution and it can then go downstream. Or it could be water pollution and end up in rivers and streams and groundwater. Or when an oil-based fire is being put out, that's going to involve often using Atralab or Aquasfilm for forming foam. The Class B foam used for putting out fires also has these PFAS in it. And so over time, they're known as forever chemicals because they don't break down on their own. Your body can't break them down. And so as they're used, that kind of builds up in the environment, builds up in people's bodies and in animals' bodies. And ultimately it can get, well, it gets into people. And so on the next slide, on slide five. You can be exposed through food, water, air. If you're eating or drinking something with PFAS in it or inhaling air that has PFAS. All of those can potentially lead to absorption. It's generally not going to be absorbed through the skin. It can be a little bit if it's there for a long time, but generally that's not so much of an issue. So when we're dealing with it in water, we're not concerned about showering or bathing as much. Mostly we're concerned about drinking it. So drinking water can be a source of exposure, and that's what we're here mostly to talk about because that's where a lot of the initial attention has been on. There is increasing attention towards food as well because it does show up in food. It can work its way into the foods we eat. So if it's grown in soil with PFAS, plants can have it, or animals are fed food that has PFAS. They'll build up the PFAS and we can be exposed that way. It's also sometimes found in food packaging because it's so, it's fat and water resistant. That can, that's very helpful for packaging, but it can, a little bit can potentially get into your food that way. We don't have much air pollution here in terms of industrial sources of PFAS, but that's another potential source, especially elsewhere in the country. Over time, it builds up in your body, these compounds, once they're in your body, it takes years to get rid of them. And so over time, it can build up to higher and higher levels until it gets to levels where you can start seeing health effects. And those health effects include, they're toxic to the liver, and when they're toxic to the liver, they change metabolism and especially metabolism of cholesterol. So it can ultimately lead to higher levels of the bad cholesterol, which is bad for cardiovascular disease. Could potentially increase the risk of cardiovascular disease. So far, we just know that it increases cholesterol levels, but they're, you know, it's reasonable to assume that might be bad for heart attacks or other things. It lowers infant birth weights by a very small amount, but even a very small amount can potentially be bad. And the fact that it is doing anything during development is concerning. One of the most concerning things it does is weaken immune response. So there's evidence that after you get a vaccine, the antibodies that are produced are less if you're exposed to PFAS, even at the low levels that typical people are often exposed to. And there have been associations with some cancers such as kidney cancer, especially in areas with higher levels of PFAS. So because of all of this, lowering PFAS exposure is important. Almost everybody has it in their blood. It's fairly universal in our current, you know, in our current society, but to the extent we can reduce it, that's what we want to do. So when we look at the health risks, what it does, a lot of what PFAS does is make things that are fairly common and fairly bad for everybody a little bit more likely. So increasing the cholesterol a little bit could increase someone's risk of heart attacks or suppressing immune systems and other things. So when we look at lots of people, like over the population of Rhode Island or groups of people, we're definitely very concerned about this. However, for an individual, it's not going to be the main reason you get a heart attack or the main reason any of these, you know, you get a disease or other things. It's just increasing your risk. And so if you're worried about PFAS, we should try to address that PFAS, but there are also the steps you're kind of probably all aware of from talking to your primary care physician of like nutrition and vitamins and physical activity and taking drugs to manage cholesterol and seeing your physician. All of those things can help protect you from the diseases that PFAS cause. Overall, our recommendation is if there's more than 70 parts per trillion, no water with more than 70 parts per trillion PFAS should be consumed. There are treatment options available, so there's filters and other approaches that can be used to remove the PFAS from drinking water. But treatment does need to be routinely maintained. You can't just install a treatment and then forget about it. It needs to be replaced. It needs to be maintained on a regular basement basis. The National Sanitation Foundation has a list of compa, of treat, treatment devices, like under the sink filters that do reduce PFAS. And so it's important to make sure that if you're buying something to get rid of PFAS, that it's been shown and established that it really does remove the PFAS. Generally, you want to avoid PFAS whenever you're drinking water, preparing food, brushing teeth, anything where you're likely to be swallowing that water. It's not such a concern for showering, as I mentioned earlier. And unlike, say, if we had a bacterial contamination event, like there's bacteria in the water, you can't boil it to get rid of it. The PFAS will not evaporate out of the water and actually if you boil water, as you boil away some of that water, it'll just increase the concentration of PFAS. Bottled water is an option if people do have PFAS in their water. It's not regulated by the FDA. Like the FDA doesn't require that bottled water be tested for PFAS, but most bottled water companies do test for PFAS. And so if you're concerned about it, you can reach out to the company. They should be able to tell you how often they test and share the results of that. And so in general, you want to avoid exposure to PFAS, whether it's from your water or from grease resistant food packaging, microwave popcorn bags. The stuff you buy in the store today has shorter chain PFAS. Those shorter chain PFAS don't build up in the body as much, but they likely have a lot of the same effects. It just takes a lot more of them to have those same effects. But if you can avoid PFAS in general, not just in water and in the environment, but in the products you buy, that's recommended. And so stain resistant carpet, waterproof clothing, those sorts of things are full of PFAS. And if you can avoid them or avoid like, like the waterproof mascara or a lot of cosmetics have PFAS in it. The glide tooth, tooth floss is another source and dental floss. And so anywhere you can kind of avoid PFAS, it's a good idea to avoid. So I'll hand it over to Amy, who's going to talk through the law and kind of what we've been up to.
So the, the Rhode Island PFAS law that passed last, last summer and was modified earlier this summer and established an interim drinking water standard for public water systems of 20 parts per trillion for the sum of six PFASs. So the six PFASs that are regulated under the law are, the acronyms are PFOA, PFOS, PFDA, PFNA, PFHSS, PFHPA. The law required all community and non-transit, non-community water systems, this is sample for PFAS, by July 1st of this year. Those two types of water systems are, community water systems are where people live. And non-transit, non-community water systems are where people, the same people spend part of their days, at least six months out of the year. So example of that is schools and workplaces. So all of those where the same people are being exposed to drinking water over most of the year are required to sample for PFAS as we did by July 1st. And then any routine sampling that happens after that is based on whatever results they got from the first round of sampling. Could be quarterly sampling, it could be yearly, it could be every two years depending on the results. So public water systems that exceeded that standard, that are over 20 parts per trillion, they're required to enter into a consent agreement with the Rhode Island Department of Health within 180 days of being, of being notified. So once we know that they've confirmed to have exceeded the state standard, we send them a notice of exceedance and then that starts the clock for that 180 day timeframe, timeframe to enter into a consent agreement with us. What a consent agreement is, is, is it documents a water system's plan of action to come into compliance by an achievable deadline. So we're now on slide 11. So what we found in Rhode Island for PFAS, we received results from PFAS testing from 168 of the 170 water systems that this applies to. And most of the water systems had PFAS less than the 20 parts per trillion, or they did not detect PFAS, but some did. So three of the public water systems had PFAS greater than 70 parts per trillion, which Dr. Burns mentioned, is that threshold for where we recommend not drinking the water. And then we had eight additional public water systems exceed that 20 parts per trillion interim state standard. Two additional public water systems exceeded that 20 parts per trillion standard with their first sample. Now they're required to take a confirmation sample, and then if they exceed and their average is over 20, then they'll also be considered out of, out of compliance with that standard. So slide 12 shows a table of, of these water systems that I just gave numbers for. So the water systems that exceeded the 70 parts per trillion threshold for do not drink is Lad Center, Exeter Job Corps, and Bruin Plastics. Exeter Job Corps is a kind of a connection off of Lad Center, so they all use a Lad Center wells. Bruin Plastics is its own separate water system with its own well. And then the water systems that were less than 70 but exceeded that 20 parts per trillion are West Gloucester Elementary School, Captain Isaac Payne School, North Smithfield Junior Senior High School, Carousel Industries, Wright's Farm Restaurant, Coventry Air National Guard, Wood River Health Services, and the University of Rhode Island. And there's a couple of caveats on here. So for example, these water systems that are exceeding, this is based off really the, the highest result we found with them so far. So some water systems do some blending. So they might have a well that has high PFAS, another well that has low PFAS, and they're able to dilute it down. We sampled, had all the wells sampled, and so some water systems are able to shut off their high PFAS well. They have enough water, enough capacity to be able to do that. Coventry Air National Guard is an example of one of those water systems. So you can see on here that, if you see on the right column, it says the PFAS level, there's an 84 parts per trillion slash 18 parts per trillion. And there's a footnote down there. So that just means that they shut off their high PFAS well and we're right now using the lower PFAS well. Some water systems that isn't an option, and they would have to add treatment. And even these ones that were able to shut off their high PFAS well, it might only be a temporary solution depending on how much capacity they need, how much water they need. So it might not be their long enough solution. They might still need to add treatment. So on the next slide, slide 13, is the findings of the PFAS testing in Exeter. So the Lad Center had a high of 314 parts per trillion. Now compared to the 20 parts per trillion standard, that's much higher than that. Exeter Job Corps had, which again is a, is off over the same wells that like Lad Center uses. That's 198 parts per trillion is the highest that they saw, that they saw. And then Carousel Industries, its own separate water system, had 55 parts per trillion. So then as far as the next steps, slide 14. The next steps include investigation of the sources of the contamination, letters to private well owners. So we do expect that we will be sending out letters to private well owners within the vicinity of these wells that have high PFAS results, of these public wells that have PFAS, high PFAS results. We'll be sending out letters to those private well owners recommending they do testing to see if they have, what the levels are in their wells. The next step, another step, is that Lad Center will be required to enter into a consent agreement with the Department of Health within 180 days. Now Lad Center, we just recently received their confirmation sample results, so their notice of exceedance letter, exceedance letter has not gone out yet, but we do expect to send that out this week. So their 180 days will fall sometime, I think that makes it maybe early February. To come into consent agreement. And then Lad Center is also required to monitor quarterly as any water system that exceeds the standard is required to monitor quarterly. And then Lad Center has to notify Exeter Job Corps of their results so that both water systems can provide continuous public notices to their consumers until the compliance is achieved. The second to last slide, slide 15, and that is about PFAS testing for private wells. So like I mentioned, we will be sending out a letter, we'll be doing that probably in the next two weeks. PFAS testing for private well owners should only be done by a certified water testing lab. And we recommend avoiding at-home and mail-in testing. There are certain kits that are out there that, that are not necessarily certified laboratories, so we can't really verify the accuracy of the data. So we do recommend using a certified laboratory, and there is a list of certified labs on our Department of Health website. Cost estimate for sampling is $200, $400 per sample. Now, $200, the lower end of the range is, is what you would pay, around what you would pay if you don't have any detections in your sample, if you don't have any PFAS in your sample. But it is recommended by labs that you take what's called a blank sample. So what it is, is usually what it is, is it's water that comes from the lab itself. It's known not to have PFAS in it. And then you, when you take your sample from your tap or your, you know, from your house, from your private well, you would also fill up another bottle with the water provided by the lab in the same area at the same time so that if there's any cross-contamination, because PFAS, because Dr. Burns explained PFAS is in a lot of things, it's everywhere. And so there's certain, we have testing guidelines. So certain like clothing you shouldn't be wearing and material you shouldn't have on you, such as waterproof, like vortex type clothing and things like that that can have PFAS in it. You don't want to cross-contaminate and accidentally contaminate your sample because then we won't know if it's coming from your well, that it's actually coming from something maybe on your body or in the vicinity. So that blank test helps show whether it's cross-contamination or whether it's actually coming from your well. So if you have a detection in the sample coming from your well, then the lab will do analysis of that blank sample, and then that increases the price. And so it could go up to $400 potentially. There are in-state labs, there are out-of-state labs, so we don't know the cost across the board for all of the labs, but that's a range you can expect. And then lastly, as I mentioned, we have the testing guidelines and they are available on our website. And we have a private wells program webpage to our Department of Health website, and that has some additional information on, as well, on testing for private wells. So that's really the summary and the conclusion to our presentation. And we do have our my contact information and Dr. Burns' contact information on the last slide here, but we're also happy to take any questions right now.
Hang on, the way the agenda discussion with the council, I've got a few questions. We're going to open it up before, don't worry, I have the names, so. The Lad Center well, let me find here. Are they testing just once a quarter for these? Or are they, normally the drinking water standard, they're testing like once a quarter a week a day? Maybe the labs are going to do that.
So normally, before PFAS and even during, besides PFAS, they test on a routine basis.
Yeah.
Bacteria and other things.
Right, right, right. So they test for bacteria on a monthly basis and things like that.
So for PFAS, because they did exceed the standard, they are required to test quarterly. So so far, they've taken two samples, an initial sample of PFAS and a confirmation sample, and now they have to sample quarterly.
Now, that's not the one that's, that since this was published, the new samples?
No, this includes, so the, the result you see here is the highest average. So it's, I believe they sampled in, in, in June initially, and then they took their confirmation sample, I would say probably two or three weeks ago, because we just received the results last week.
Are you lucky to have those results?
Well, this is the average.
The average is different.
So this is the highest average, is the 314. I do have the actual results here. I can tell you of each next slide. So for well number two, they had, this was June 12th, it was 314 parts per trillion. That was the initial sample. The initial sample for well three, and again, this is for the sum of six PFASs. Well three was 35.5 parts per trillion.
That one was 18 before, previous.
Back in 2017.
Me, myself and Bill, I think what you guys did is the meeting, right? One well was, one well was really close in the numbers though.
Yeah, we did a sampling study across the state in 2017 and 2019. And at that time, Lad Center's wells exceeded 20 parts per trillion, but not by much. And at that time, 20 wasn't standard, EPA health advisory was 70. So they were under EPA's health advisory at that time. So this is much higher, much higher.
They just only have a one well with spike. How many wells are over there though?
Yeah, so they have two wells total. So the confirmation sample for, and July 10th for well number two, that first one I mentioned, was similar. It's 314.7 parts per trillion. And well three confirmation sample was taken on July 10th was 42 parts per trillion. That one didn't spike as much as the well two.
And how long have you been testing for these chemicals now?
So it hasn't been a requirement. It's not a national requirement yet. EPA is working on a regulation. And it just recently became a state requirement last summer. But we did that round of testing in 2017, 2019 throughout the state. Otherwise, that was something that we initiated. It's not something that's been a requirement until now.
Next question. Last page, because I've had a lot of phone calls from residents. PFAS testing for private wells, is your webpage friendly so people can find this? I deal with state webpages all the time. They're not very friendly. Is it something that these people, the company, could be, to them, like, have? Did I hear, a lot of these small places out here, they're, they're, they're testing just for these little ones, are not set up for that, so.
Yeah, so we have a link that has all the certified labs on it, but it's really our, I would go to our private wells page. And that's, that is user-friendly page, and specifically to help people who aren't used to going to our state webpages and understanding everything it's going through, kind of step by step. And it links to that sampling guidance, and that's just a two-page guidance on that. We need to update it because we just found out last week, there's a, a new lab, a lab in the state that is newly able to analyze PFAS. And that's Rhode Island Analytical Labs. And so on there, it'll show which labs that we know of can do analysis.
Is it the Balla?
Balla's a different lab.
Balla's a different one, okay. Next question, because I'm in the construction business, I know departments that do samples, they basically don't have to bring them. Is this some kind of instructions, because someone has never done, you just got to tough that with your finger and you throw the test results up.
Yeah, I mean, so we, we want to be careful, and our, and our two-pager guidance has a table for what's acceptable, what's not. For example, it'll say like dry erase markers versus Sharpies, I mean, things like that. And so it, it does list that out. There, there's been studies that have shown that it's not like that easy to actually contaminate the sample, but you still want to do it as much as you can to avoid contaminating it. Yes, not touching it inside of the cover, making sure you seal it up as soon as possible. And then taking that blank sample is highly recommended because that would really help kind of figure out, making sure there's actually some trouble down.
Good, does anybody want to come up with a question?
Oh, yes.
What spiked these levels? We, we had this discussion, see you and Bill, and then I'm reading you, because the whole area where your wells are, for a long, long time, it was potato fields, you had turf fields, you had the lad, and then what, my, out there? So this is, but what gets me is you're saying it doesn't have supply.
Since 2012, right?
Since 2017.
17?
Well, it was the first. Yeah, we don't have, we don't have any data, even those, we don't have any samples.
So you're not really looking for a source yet. You're trying to solve the problem.
So yeah, the Department of Health, so our, our role is making sure that the drinking water is going to be safe to drink. Working with the water system to make sure the drinking water is going to be safe to drink. As far as investigating environmental contamination, Department, Department of Environmental Management works on that. And so I will look down to that end and see if they wanted to comment on that. But the other thing is, I know that the, the water systems themselves sometimes sometimes start initiating investigation as well, so.
Yes. Well, those of us that have been involved in local governance for some time have been concerned, four years, about the aquifer and their eventual contaminations of, sort of, sources of contamination. And we know, and there's no need to go back and try to bring water back up from over the dam, because it's where we are today, it's where we need to move forward. One question I have is that the Quonset Development Corporation is now the water system provider, what is what I read here? So does that mean that Quonset Development Corporation has some role in addressing the issue of the water quality?
So Quonset Development Corporation has an, I believe it's called an easement in this case, to operate and run and own the water system there. So they are who we address our departments to as the, as the legal kind of ownership of the water system.
So are they, sorry, as a layperson, and this is a way outside of my daily work here, you folks. So are they owning and operating? And where, you know, I've spoken of this to some folks, and they say, what does that mean? I say, I don't know, good question. So now that I have you folks, I'm going to ask. I don't know whether these people have any, so maybe they already know the answer. Maybe they're, I don't know, who doesn't. What's happening? Is that water from Lad Center being used elsewhere away from Lad Center? I mean, how are they operating? They're just operating it there?
Yeah, I can explain that a little bit more.
They're not taking it anywhere else, it's only?
It's just there, yeah, so it's there. So there's two wells at Lad Center, supplies all the buildings over there. And then supplies, Exeter Job Corps is kind of in the same area. There's three buildings there, and maybe became their own public water system if they had some, like, corrosion control treatment. So it's supplying them. But then it's not going anywhere else. And just to be clear, although Quonset Development Corporation runs the water system at Lad Center, Quonset Development Corporation, as the Quonset campus, is a different area. That's a different area, they have different wells, different water systems, so that's separate from Lad Center.
I just think that some of us locally need to know where we turn to look at who's, who's at charge. But that's all right, just from a layman's perspective here. The other concern I have, when you mentioned notifying folks in the vicinity, private homeowner as well, owners in the vicinity. What do you consider the vicinity, number one? And number two, in these letters that you intend to send, will they have some specific recommendations regarding testing? Or is it just simply going to say, go to our website and get on your own, folks? I mean, I would only suggest that it would be nice to notify those in the vicinity of what they might actually do. So how do you define vicinity?
Yeah, so when we did our study, 2017, 2019, we defined it. At the time, we were defining it as above a mile, just to see what was out there. We have a little more information since we started, well, D E M started doing some investigating, and then we had exceedance at Oakland Water District in Louisville. And so we kind of learned that the vicinity could be a lot smaller, but it kind of like a quarter mile or so, but it could depend on, we're making the assumption that the higher PFAS concentration in a public well, maybe the further out we should look as a vicinity. And so we haven't, I don't think we've finalized that, but I think what we're looking at is maybe a mile around those that exceed 70, like the Lad Center wells, and maybe like a quarter mile around those that exceed 20, but are less than 70. That's kind of what we're considering right now. Would it ever go further than a mile, since the number is so much higher than 70? So there's a couple purposes to sampling private wells. One is for private well homeowners and the people that live in the house to know what they're being exposed to. Another is to kind of look at where the contamination plume could be. And so I would, you know, D E M is more the expert in this, so I would defer to them. But in general, yeah, I would say if you're seeing it still at really high levels, a mile out, then you could walk further and to see where it comes from.
Yeah, it's difficult to say, because right now we just have this one data point that says this well is impacted. So I can talk about it more later, but here at the Lad Center in general, there's also another public well there that gives us some additional information. I think it's the Parkers Hall now, but it was the former Phoenix House well, correct? So that well, that's just a few hundred yards away, and that was non-detect back in 2017 and 2019, and also in the most recent round of sampling. So that kind of tells us that, at least in this case, even though we have levels above the 70 at that, at the Lad Center well, if this other well just up gradient is not showing anything, now there's some difference in the well construction, but if this isn't showing anything, probably not this large widespread issue we're dealing with here. And that's just based off a lot of site-specific factors, like the topography of the area, the general, you know, like, when that leads into the groundwater flow direction, and also some, like I said, the existing data in this case.
So you think things downstream are more affected?
Yeah.
You said up gradient, so I'm assuming that's upstream.
Yeah, and that's always the case, you know, in general, and at the Lad Center in particular. These wells are right at the margin of the wetlands, where the Queen River and Set Water is there. They're kind of down gradient of like Fire Academy there, and most of the homes are to the northwest. And so that's up gradient, because groundwater flow, you look at kind of the general topography in that area, is kind of flowing more towards the southeast. And, sorry, southwest, sorry, southwest. And those homes are all to like the northeast of that fire training area, up in kind of the higher elevations. So that's, that's something, in this case at least, working at the Lad Center, that kind of helps us breathe a little sigh of relief, at least, that we're seeing impacts down gradient. And we have this up gradient well associated with the former Phoenix House that isn't showing any results. So that's a good sign, that is probably some wide, some red issue we're dealing with here.
And you just said Fire Academy.
Did you want to jump on that, or should one of us?
Somebody else, man.
No. I, well. When the academy was proposed, and I wasn't on the planning board, never had been, some had been, I don't know if you were there then, but my point.
They didn't tell us.
Well, my point is that there were concerns, we all heard them, and I read about firefighting foam. But I also have read somewhere, and I don't remember where, that none of that is being used. I would hope that that, that were the case, if what I read, whatever, is so, that firefighting foam can be one of the leading contaminants, which, again, we're over the aquifer, and when you say it's going downstream, as you say, that's good, but that means that the aquifer is downstream and continuing. I only remember before you were born, a shellfish processing plant here which contaminated the aquifer, and I know you don't know about that. You already were born now, but I was. And that's, that's just a concern, you don't want that kind of, we won't allow that anymore with that zoning. We didn't have zoning, and that's what was good. So now the state is going to have, sorry, the state is going to have to put up the academy. And it's very nice, I'm glad you're here, to express your concerns, but you understand where some of us are concerned about. So let's go forward and not do those things. You just, what you just said about former Phoenix House is good for me to hear.
Yeah.
That it's close to.
Yep.
That place I just mentioned, and it doesn't appear to be a contaminant there.
Yeah, but no, I mean, it's kind of the elephant in the room, obviously, is the fire academy. And, you know, back then, when that was. When that was, when that was constructed, you know, back then, there wasn't a lot of, the science of these chemicals wasn't really well-known of the problem with at the time. And, you know, these chemicals, take a step back, they were developed by the Navy because of a deadly fire that occurred on a ship where they lost hundreds and hundreds of lives. Yeah, it was a forest fire. So, I mean, they didn't have a way to fight these petroleum fires when the tanks went up. And on that ship, tons of people died because they could not put it out, these chemicals, when they were developed, were lifesavers. And so it's just one of those things where hindsight being 2020, no one really looked at the potential problems. And that's been the case with a lot of environmental problems, you know, all throughout history. Name, PCDs, DVT, whatever it might be. You get this miracle chemical that does the job, and that was the case with these. But now, where we're at now, we're understanding, these are problematic. They're very recalcitrant, they don't break down in the environment, like a lot of other things. So unfortunately, that's where we're at now. But with the Fire Academy, I know, I've also been told that they never practiced with foam, and that I think it was actually a requirement determined, they didn't. But, you know, the science is always evolving, and we know now, even cross-contamination, potentially, they were using candy-down hoses or other apparatus that in the past had used this stuff. That could be a potential cause of contamination.
Makes us feel so much better.
Do we count?
Not really, but, you know, and I don't know whether these other folks will have an opportunity to speak to us, if you're colleagues, and maybe you have something where you can add, maybe you can make us feel better rather than fire, rather than fire hoses and other issues, you know, what it means.
And so this, do you think that this contamination is coming from that site somewhere? Yes?
It's too early to tell, but I will say, it's been pointed out, the nature of the chemical, we talked about PFAS, there's thousands of these compounds, but the specific ones that are showing up in the Lad Center wells, versus like Charazell, for instance, are generally more indicative of a triple F release, so from a firefighting foam. So, I mean, we, it's too early to say, we only have this one data point, like I said. But based on the limited information we have, it seems probable the source could be from firefighting foam.
Okay, and so that is a state agency, that this is state land, some other private Quonset water supply, whatever that's called, is in charge of this? And now, private citizens have to test their wells in, on their own dime? Like, the state or Quonset isn't going to be responsible for helping these people test their wells?
I don't know if you want to take that first.
Well, that's a loaded question. There's a loaded question, which we all want an answer to, by the way.
What about putting the filters in after you, your well comes back high? I'll test, but putting the $2,000 filters just come in, when it's not mine?
All right, wait until we have answers right then.
Can I be any good an answer, right? You got any questions, Dave?
Oh, that was kind of a question.
Well, we don't have, we don't have answers.
So we have an ESO hand here.
Bob, hang on just a minute, I got, do you have any?
I do, I'm not having, after Phil's done here, we're going to start.
He can go first, he can go first.
All right, go ahead, Bob.
I run Slovenville Farm. I have but, your drug center and all that. Last year at this time, I spent $6,000 for a new well. It cost me $300 to have the water tested. That water test doesn't pick up a meter. We're talking close to $1,500 for the private citizen to have this tested, your chemical. Now, how come my next-door neighbor is getting free drinking water, and I don't get free drinking water? I pay taxes here, what do I have to do? Stop paying taxes to the people with, all those job calls, fire centers, don't pay tax one to accidents. Us taxpayers, if I wanted to get booted here. I wanted to know if the state's going to test my well. You know, I don't know, I really don't know. I bought the land, I've been there for many years, just like Calvin said. It's been there before me.
Yeah, so I can speak to the funding that's currently becoming available to do all of this work right now. So it's really, we're being funded through two federal grants, through the EPA, if I work with them, for infrastructure law. Unfortunately, right now, some of the funding that's allowing me to do this testing is limited to public water systems. There is a bill before Congress that was recently introduced. We just received a copy of it that would allow some of that funding to be used for private well testing. But right now, we shouldn't, public well, it's for uses of that funds.
I called Quonset to swan a question, even before I found out you're having a meeting at 2 o'clock. No one ever got back to me on that. Now, I'm on the fire department, probably will tell you, when we use their hydrants, we have to notify them, you know, the drop of water pressure and things of that sort. They're just in the water.
Thank you, Bill. Do you want, yeah, anything else to say, Bob?
What, I'll do it.
Anything else to say, Bob? Good, okay. All right, we're going to do the public first. I've got four signed up here. First is Paul McFadden.
Hi. I'd like to thank Department of Health and D E M to come to the town of Exeter. It's a small municipality and around a lot of people here compared to other townships, but I'm glad to see you still think that we matter, and I greatly appreciate it as a citizen of Exeter, that you came so quickly, my sister brought our attention. Some of our anxiety, I think, as a citizen, is that if we look at your results, and there are 11 sites here, they just have caught, almost called them hot. Thirty percent of them were in Exeter, and I think that serves, you know, an area of concern for any citizen of Exeter to say, okay, how, why is this? What, what, what are we going to have to do? And Councilman Ellis said, well, as far as our testing requirements as a resident, how large an area relative to the contaminated wells are going to be solicited by the Department of Health to do some testing at residential area? But I guess my question is, is there a timeline at D E M for contamination identification that you're thinking about as far as, you're saying, well, the type of PFAS that is here is indicative of fire, fire foam? So trying to look out, like, how far into the future are we talking about before you identify the specific cause of the contamination? Is it six months, is it a year?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, in this case, it's hard to say for this specific site, because we're dealing with quite a few sites here. We've actually done to date a lot of source investigation throughout the state when we had federal funding available through EPA. So we have done some follow-ups to some of the 2017 and 2019 rounds. We're actually tasked, under the most recent legislation that passed last year that Amy referred to earlier, to come up with a statewide source site investigation plan. And that plan is legislatively mandated, that we have that out for the public comment by November 1st of this year. Now, that plan, you know, will go to public comment, and then it has to be implemented, I believe is the way it's worded, by January 1st, 2024. So by the end of the year. So that means that we have this plan on looking at the different sources throughout the state. It has to be implemented by then, but I can't say for certain today, when we'll have availability to go and look at each individual site. But there's typically been, and there was in the past, kind of a prioritization of risk when we look at these different exceedances. And so, an example, 2017, 2019, we had some funding to look at a handful of sites. Exeter, the Lad Center at the time, as Amy mentioned earlier, was only slightly above that 20 parts per trillion, it was below the 70. And when we looked at the results then, similar to what they are now, those wells, where the impacts are, and even if you were to jump that up to the fire training area, the amount of wells, private wells, homes, in close proximity was actually a lot lower than some other sites. We looked at a lot of schools where. where the school had similar levels at the time. And there might have been 20 houses in a quarter-mile radius where here, we're only looking at a handful. And I say the quarter-mile radius because when we've done some of these source investigations, we don't, we haven't seen too many instances where it's extended much longer than that. The case of Oakland, where there was a public water system in the village of Oakland in Slokanville, that had similar levels to what we're seeing here. It ended up being from a fire station. And there was also, half the village was served by that water system, the other half was served by private wells. Fire station was right in Oakland. And those homes, even there, where we had a similar release, we had a release of A triple F that resulted in similar levels from the public water system. After about a quarter mile, at the extent, there was about 60 private wells. And probably not 80% of them had impacts. But at the margins, the plume had trailed off and it wasn't much to see. So when we talk a mile here for these private wells, just, just for some perspective, that's very concerning. We're not expecting to be dealing with plumes that long necessarily. Especially with the nature of this area, both of these, the two sites we're talking about here are right on a river or wetlands boundary. And flow is typically gonna go right into there, it's gonna get diluted in, you know, the bugs and bunnies. We might have to think about that in the future. But right now, our concern is definitely drinking water, even health, and that's kind of where we've been focused.
And just to add, I think there might be one point that maybe hasn't been touched on in the PPL. So there's the, kind of the Job Corps site, which Nick had previously mentioned, the particular PFAS chemicals that were detected are indicative of A triple F. The Carousel Industries site is an entirely different suite of plumes detected that are not indicative of, of A triple F. So don't think of this as one huge plume stretch from Job Corps up to Carousel Industries. They're really two discrete, well, we suspect two discrete sources. Because I think there may be a misconception that people are thinking from, from Job Corps up to a mile up to, up to.
Sure, I think that's an obvious need.
Yeah, so that's not the case. There's two separate sources, so just so everyone's clear on that.
Okay, so the properties of PFAS are different.
Entirely different.
I think that's, that's good to know. So, yes, I, I don't wanna think of the council, really. But is there a point of contact that the council could have, or that DEM could identify them for this particular issue? Because like I said, 30% of the hot sites are in Exeter. And so, I mean, occasionally, if not with some great frequency, they may have a question brought to them by the citizens, and they may wanna be able to relay it. So is there a, an individual at DEM that's ahead of this PFAS activity?
I think it might, I think it depends on the nature of the question. If it's like a health-related question, or like if they get their results and they have questions about it, that's probably something that's more, it's your Department of Health. Yeah, so I think it depends on the nature of the response.
Maybe they need two names, at least names to start with.
And I think we, I think we could give them that.
Sure. Again, I don't wanna think that, they're probably already thinking this, but was there an environmental, so was there an environmental impact study? Because I understand this is a water containment system at the Fire Academy. And it's like, if you built that, you were anticipating something. So was there an environmental impact study performed prior to the construction of the, the Fire Academy?
Fire Academy would have been permitted, and I believe it was. But as far as the environmental impact assessment on that itself, I don't believe so. But there have been, there have been environmental investigations, both at the lad center and actually Carousel Industries back when it was carbon technologies. But those were pre-PFAS, and they're mostly concerned with like petroleum-type releases, releases from underground storage tanks. So like, you know, the oil tank, something like that. So there were past environmental investigations. There did not be impact analysis of this specifically due to the fire training academy, not that I'm aware of.
Is there a water containment system at the Fire Academy? Do you know?
I don't know the specifics of that, but I.
I can speak to that, because I was on planning when it went through. And they told us, because this would have worried, that every single drop of whatever they used was recovered. Every single drop will be recovered.
Yeah, and I can speak to, in general, the fire training areas, especially if they're lighting like fewer combustible things on fire. You know, some of the treatment might be focused more, and in the past, it always was on like oil-water separators and things like that, to protect that from getting into the environment. But PFAS is a whole new animal, and, you know, when a lot of these things were designed, it was not the primary focus. So that's, that could be one of the reasons.
Thank you. I have four people I gotta get through here. Next is Patty Whitford.
The letters that you're talking about standing out in the vicinity of a mile, that's a mile where the wells are located and in all directions. It's a mile not from the property boundary, but from the wells?
Yeah, it would be from the wells. And again, we haven't finalized that. We are, it's a draft, and we're still gonna connect the DEM on it to finalize it. And so, there might be guidance as far as looking at a particular direction, but it would be from the wells themselves.
Exactly.
Well, they're on lad center property, and I'm visualizing the map that we looked at. But I don't remember any, I don't remember.
They're about, they're about a hundred.
That's 350 acres of Slokanville.
The wells are about a hundred yards to the southwest. I can actually show you a little bit of figure here. I don't have enough to pass up to everyone, but. Yeah, I can get copies of this, so I'll try to show this for everyone. So here, here's the lad center. You know, it extends down here, obviously, but fire training area there, that's this well right here, that moved on. That's the former Phoenix House well that I mentioned. These wells down here are the ones we're talking about. So maybe a hundred yards, maybe a little bit more to the southwest.
Which is the highest point? Which is the highest mill? Which well?
Actually, I don't know. Do you know?
Two, well, number two.
Two, which one is well two?
I'm not sure which one's two on here. Do you guys know offhand? Not sure offhand, but it's one of these two, which they're, they're relatively close to each other. And they're, they're also relatively shallow from the information I had. They're not very deep.
Where's John Court, Jason Till's wells? Where's John Court, Jason Till's wells?
I don't know offhand. It's probably definitely, I think it's right around here, but it's hard to judge it.
Did you get your answer?
So you're gonna send out letters to people in the vicinity of a mile and tell them that they shouldn't have their wells tested or possibly have their wells tested?
Yeah, I don't have enough to go around, because you guys don't mind sharing.
Is the state working at all, I know what you're saying earlier, you're working at all to try and help these people? I could very well be one of them. But why would you just send out letters? I mean, I understand you send out letters to help us, but then there's no help after that. And the state probably, and then it's like, hey, my wells.
Yeah, again, we're hopeful that that, that was recently. Yeah, so we're working with our congressional, Senator Reed's office, so we're expanding, being able to use
Do you have a card you can leave with us?
I can leave you one. Contact me.
Leave it with Mike Burke, because I'm gonna find you.
And then one more question. When you say you're gonna test like quarterly or whatever, what makes this stuff dissipate? Is there something that you put in the well or in a what?
So it's a treatment system.
It's just a treat, it has to be a treatment, doesn't it? That's the only thing that will.
Or like dilution. Like, like I said, if you have like, some water systems have one well that doesn't have any PFAS in it, and one well that has high PFAS. And if you blend the two together, then you might be in compliance under the 21% requirement. In Oakland, they actually abandoned their well.
But if I had my well, what would I do?
You'd add filtration system. Yeah, and so these kinds of filters, like some that you can even buy on Amazon, but you wanna make sure that they're getting the good ones and the ones that are certified by the National Sanitation Foundation. And so our private wells website has information on that. The National Sanitation Foundation, actually, fairly good website. It's called granular activated carbon is the most common filtration type.
Can you do that, please?
Granular activated carbon. Yeah, and so the higher, the higher PFAS concentrations there are, and the more you use the water, the more you have to change out the filter. So like Dr. Williams mentioned, you can't just put a filter on and forget about it. There's usually manufacturer recommendations, like in the manual, that will say how often they recommend changing the filters.
Thank you.
Can you be, Burke?
Yes. I came to the other meeting the other night, and I said, you guys, go up here, I appreciate you all coming up. My biggest concern is, I, I live right over near that area, I'm near Williams, around South Room. And I have my well there. And my big, my biggest concern is they, when they built this fire station thing there to train, they said they would not have any foam there. But they didn't say they would not bring equipment in that had had foam in it. And I think from what they were saying is that that area is higher, and there's wetlands below it, so it's an open door, so it flows right in. And now, the contamination, I think, is at a point where people could lose property values severely. Not only get sick, but people aren't gonna wanna buy any property that even has a hint of that kind of contamination. Your value of property is gonna go right down to 2%. You only gonna give everybody, okay? It's a very big concern. I think the state has a lot of responsibility to step in here and help the people of this town. To take in and test their water, put filter systems in, and not rely on the people of this small town to bear that burden when it was forced upon us to bring that system in for the fire training into this town with no compensation at all, but bring in poison to us, to feed us, and to contaminate our water and everything else. I own like 20, 20-something acres there in town. I have a small pond in the back. Now, when that water runs down and gets in my little pond, that's gonna contaminate even further out onto Route 2, if that does happen. I also noted that those wells also feed North Kingston people. North Kingston people are gonna be affected by this. It's, it's just a big coming problem. People don't realize, they can't visualize it, but I can. I knew it way back when they wanted to build this foolish thing, that they shouldn't do it. The only thing you should have been allowed to do is climb up their ladders and maybe test fire hoses for water or something like that, to show people how to use that equipment. But to bring in the other equipment and trucks and stuff like that into this town and pollute us, I think the state is responsible to stand behind the people of Exeter and take care of us. And I don't know why we have all this here today, for no reason at all, but just to go over, hash over issues that we've had for, for the last 10 years when they built this foolish thing. Now, this lady here, she was on the, she knows exactly what I'm talking about, because I came and I spoke about it. And I didn't want it then, and I still don't want it now. And I would ask the town and the state to stop them from having any training in that situation up there until all this is resolved. And not bring any more out-of-town equipment in this town for testing, which is, could be contaminating with more of this PFAS stuff. And I, that's, that's what I have to say on the matter. And I appreciate it, y'all. And I'm sorry I got a little upset, but it's a real big concern. My wife had cancer twice, and I'm not looking forward to have to take care of her again. It was horrible. And my elder neighbor had cancer. So, you know, there are, my, 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 my well is not, my wife's is not that well now, you know? And for this kind of chemical to get in our water, you know, it could just put it right back there again. And I don't need that. I know nobody does, you know? Thank you for this, just over to me.
Okay, next is Isa Davis.
Hi, I have a few questions. Dr. Francis, we have a female patient who has, this is actually pretty helpful. I just wanna confirm, these, these are wells 2 and 3?
Correct.
Well, two had 314 and a 314 again, in two-month separation, the tests? Then in 2019, it was below 70.
2017, I think you didn't have, they didn't test that well. Again, 2019, it was tested in 2017.
Okay, so 2017, it was below 70. And then it went to, four, four years later, it's 214 and then 314 again. The other well is number three, which is.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's 2 and 3 or 3 and 2. Not, not positive on that, but yes.
The water is running south in this direction. The well is not on the Fire Academy site. It's southwest of it.
Southwest, yeah. The general groundwater flow, I have another clue that has the geography, but everything is slow this way, this way. So yeah, it looks like it would be this way.
Which means that probably, if it is coming from the Fire Academy, it's coming from the groundwater. Is there any testing of the groundwater going on here to see if the problem is still happening? Or if it's an older problem?
Yeah, no, there's no other, the only, the only data points we have right now in groundwater are those public water systems themselves.
These two right here?
And, and the, and the other one to the.
This one here, it's tested clear?
That tested clear, yes.
Okay, so if there is a problem here, it's probably heading in that direction.
That would be the thought, yes.
Probably starting off as surface water and probably heading infiltrating as it heads south.
Yep.
Southwest. So again, I ask, is there any testing that can be done of groundwater or the surface water to figure out if the problem is still happening and maybe getting worse, or whether, how deep it is? The other question I would have is how deep is this well? And what's down here? Because once you get past this area, if it is high levels, if it's 314 testing at 100 or 200 feet in the water, it's probably a lot higher at the surface level.
Well, actually, those, from the data that I looked at, those wells are actually quite shallow. They're not very deep wells. They're, they're under 100 feet. And I don't know if you guys know that offhand, but that's the data that we have in the public, in the directory of the public water systems. So that's relatively shallow, that's relatively shallow, yeah. And, and if it is, if we're talking about surface releases of PFAS, PFAS generally moves with the flow of groundwater. So, and groundwater doesn't normally go down. So the only reason you see it in a well is if it's pumping and pulling it down. So generally, if you had a release, let's say of any chemical, like specifically PFAS here, that got down into, got infiltrated through the ground, got to the groundwater table, mixed in with the groundwater, it's just gonna follow the general flow path of groundwater, which here would probably discharge into that Queens River there. And then at that point, frankly, with surface water, anytime we've had surface water releases of PFAS, like plumes of groundwater that discharge the surface water, the dilution is so great that we see it at the point of discharge, maybe we'll see a little bit downstream. How many months, like as far as what?
Until you saw like a surface discharge disappear.
Well, I mean, these are mostly ongoing releases, so it's plumes that are going into the sur, it's not like a point in time where it's just a plug of it going through the surface. It's generally, there's some source area that's constantly feeding the, the contamination in the aquifer. So you have like generally low levels that as you go further away, you get away from the source, it would diminish if it discharged into a surface water. It will be high at that point of discharge if you took a sample right where it's popping out. But downstream, especially if it's a bigger waterway, it quickly does get diluted and you, you may not even see it like, you know, a quarter mile downstream. It all depends. There's, it's a lot of variables that go into something like this.
But Nick, this would be all part of the investigation goes forward.
So we're talking about the source investigation, though. The questions you're asking are exactly the kind of ones that we'll be looking at.
Okay, so how do we stay up to date on where that stands and what you're learning? Because, so my house is down here somewhere. I'm interested, because if this is in the aquifer already, what is the dilution rate before it gets down into my house? And all, you know, this is gonna wind up going under here, working on the other houses and stuff before you hit Carousel.
It likely isn't going that far at all. I mean, I'll say that just outright. You know, as I said, we've, from the case studies we have with PFAS.
If it stops. But if it is a continuous release and it's still going on.
Yeah, then that could exacerbate things. So that's part of the source investigation, because if, if there is some sort of practice or something that's contributing upon going to this, you wanna turn off the spigot, so that's not the case anymore. So that's part of it. With PFAS, the one thing that's very difficult is remediating it in situ, in the ground. You know, there's a lot of other chemicals out there where if there's a release in the environment, there's things we can. there's things we can do to clean it up, like you have a gas station where a tank leaks and you get oil that's got down to the groundwater table. It's all floating right there. It's not gonna move very much. It can't sink through the water tables. This stuff is very soluble and it moves quickly with the water. And there's no good way to break it down, unfortunately. You're at that term forever chemicals. So the, right now, our focus has, has been on a lot of these sites is treating it at the, if they're first looking for potential impacts and treating it at the point of use. So we're talking about filters and things like that. That's the, right now, one of the best things we have is looking at what the source is, turning off that spigot so it's not causing any more problems, looking at it over time. And, and sometimes there may be a tentative or remedial action if there's a discreet source area where the stuff's been released over time and the soil is really hot, we might remove that. But otherwise, it's really just kind of seeing where it's going, monitoring it, and trying to prevent any exposure to it.
So testing in the groundwater, just coming back to that.
Yeah.
Just coming in that way, does that happen?
That, that, like a site like this, the first step, it's hard to say right now because we're putting together that plan and I'm not sure, you know, how all the funding's gonna come together and where, like how we're gonna prioritize different sites. Because, I mean, if, if there's well, private wells testing it out here and impact, and there's really no impacts, then there might be another site where we have a lot of impacted wells. And then we, we wanna find that source a lot quicker because that's causing immediate problems. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not the best, looking at this site, there is some good news of these PFAS well upgrading. It's still not detected. And most of the homes are in that direction and that's against the way of groundwater flow. Yeah, but, but if you guys are, yeah, you're much further away and we would not anticipate that to go in the aquifer at all. It's most likely discharging right there.
And that's true. What Nick's saying is it'll quickly dilute down to below detectable levels.
All right, let's still, again, the first problem is to stop it now before it gets worse, right?
Yeah.
If it's coming from groundwater, if it is in the groundwater...
Yeah, the first step to establishing a source on a site like this would be to put in localized groundwater wells, shallow to see if you're seeing it shallow. And then if you see it shallow, the source is nearby.
And does DM do that? Is that part of the...
It, it's, yeah, it's potentially part of it. It all depends on, like I said, it hasn't been finalized yet, but we've done that. We won't, the only other case where we've done that on our own has been in Village of Oakland because that was kind of an emergency response action that was done back then. And we didn't really have a precedent for how to deal with PFAS. And so in that case, there was sixty private wells in a very small, tight packed neighborhood. And it seemed pretty likely the source in that case was smacked out in the center and it ended up leaving. So, and, so that was the case. But otherwise, you know, there's been a lot of investigations that have been done. But it's more focused on military sites, things like that where the Navy or someone who's caused a release and they're putting in these groundwater wells and doing that. Because it is, it is possible.
So for the folks that are doing the private testing and they're old enough if they're down in this area, does that help you in terms of investigation results or not help to you in scope or...
Any data, I mean, yeah, frankly, any data does help, but...
So how do you get that, how do we get that to you?
That would be...
Yeah, so any, um, any testing that is done by private wells and is sent to, at least sent to the Department of Health lab, we get those results. I'm not sure about private labs, if you were to send to the ground and local...
Yeah, you want a lab to test for it.
Do.
Do you put the test in?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're a little limited, you know, we're by our staffing resources and so... But if you were to contact our, our lab, then they would kind of schedule for you to pick up a test kit. And then they'd be able to kind of like, like plan out how many test kits they can handle on any given week or so. But it's also the Renell Analytical Laboratory. And I don't think we get results from them. I don't know if they're allowed to just release them to us, but it could be some...
The homeowners could share with us.
The homeowners could, yeah, could definitely share with us that information.
Okay, question, follow-up question. Would you do lab tests for the private residents if they're like a mile with this? If they want to bring it to you, pick up the sampling bottles from you?
Yeah, so if...
Because like I said, a lot of people in here don't have... I go, I do breaking water ones. It's only like one hundred, one hundred eighty dollars depending on how lab they're given.
I can speak to it because I took mine in last week.
How much was it?
It was two hundred bucks.
For what?
For PFAS at DOH on Arm Street.
Yeah.
And I would hold it off labbing, but the instructions on how to do this test are ridiculous. I, I'm not stupid. And I read them five times. And I still had to call the lab and spoke to someone named Ed in Receiving who was wonderful and told me how to do it. Because if you're trying to do it off what they wrote out of the Cannon Building, you're lost.
So you got your test kit from the state?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that something where, wow, I know we don't want the kids to get contaminated. Are they completely sealed?
Yes, it's not hard to do what someone tells you what to do.
If you were able to bring us like a hundred test kits of someone's test that we could give it to them? Thanks. Is that to you?
I have, yeah, I, we have to talk with our lab director about, about that, if there's a way to do it that way. There's a, there's a certain amount of time that they can hold the samples.
Yeah, I know that, yeah.
Before they have to analyze them. So it might have to be staggered. I, I don't know. I'd have to connect with them as far as how many they can...
That's like the biggest concern, a lot, one of the biggest concerns, oh, we're worried about lots of contaminated. They're bearing the cost. We're gonna see what the contamination is. I mean, that's something we really need to work on in that department. Because you're gonna go setting out all these variables within a mile of the area. Now the costs are gonna be really huge. Sim, I'm gonna let you go. It's your turn.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I wish we had this much state participation with our other labs and projects. I've been on town government a while and there's a lot of bad feeling about lab in this town because of how screwed this town has been over, over, over with labs. So this won't help. It's such a long history and bad feeling. Number two. There, there's no, so you're saying there's no way to stop the fire academy at this point? You have to go through a whole investigation, which might take eighteen months, to find out that's where the problem is and stop it?
At this point, yes. Yeah, there's no, we, we don't have the authority to just millennial tell them to stop.
But it's a fact. So do you have an idea time-wise, if it is them? How long it takes you to be able to stop them from continuing to pollute?
I, I'd like...
Two years?
Yeah, I'd like to give you a concrete timeline, but I don't have the time. But I mean, as I said, this, this report, we're due to implement this report that we're coming up with by the start of next year. So, you know, over the next, especially 2024, a lot's gonna have to happen to deal with all... It's not just, obviously, I know Exeter has been pointed out, you guys have your fair share of wells on that list that are impacted, but there's other communities too. So there's a lot of communities we're looking at right now that are potentially doing these sort of source investigations.
So two years, five years, ten years?
I don't think ten for sure, but I can't say that we'll be definitely doing it.
Two to five years?
I can't say with any certainty.
I'm not asking you certainty. Two to five years is pretty...
I'm eighty years old. I'll never live to see it.
To stop this from continuing to pollute.
Can we, can we ask the fire academy to discontinue anything that would be in that ballpark?
Certainly wouldn't, you know, and I don't think anyone would stand in the town's way of asking them and pointing some of these potential issues out.
Can, can the state ask them?
This time, I don't.
It's a conversation I think we could have with them, sure.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've talked over it in the past. When this first became an issue back in 2017 with Oakland, that was really the, like the trivia of it all. There was a discussion between DM and especially our Emergency Response Office who deals with a lot of the different chiefs and the fire academy as a whole. And one of the biggest things that was made clear then was you gotta stop practicing with that stuff now. Apparently, this was never the, they were never practicing with the foam here. So how did this happen?
I believe, Nick, we, I think DM collected all the PFAS contained foam also from the fire departments.
We did, yeah, we did do a couple of take back programs too. Yep.
Are the investigations, why all of a sudden this is showing up now and they shouldn't have PFAS foam anymore? Because we've already picked it all up.
Well, I would ask that if there is some discussion with the fire academy, that the town is part of that discussion? Because the town has now been a part of many discussions with anything to do with the state property. We just, I don't wanna, we just, I won't say that. Okay, the third, the third thing is, was the, those instructions on, on the water testing. Seriously, you're, nobody's gonna be able to do it.
I'm writing that down right now.
Nobody's gonna be able to. Somebody at the Cannon Building did it. Get the dude Ed in Receiving to do it. He knows. He knows. He was so helpful.
We know Ed.
He was so helpful. I'm waiting for my results to come back that I took in last week.
Yeah, it could take, you know, it can take a little, two weeks or so.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
My question is, if I come back high, are they then gonna wanna look at it and see which PFAS are, are in my water?
So the results will show which, which of the PFASs are in your water? They, they test for something like twenty, you know, what are they testing for, one fourteen or so?
So I know it's coming, if it's coming from Carousel or if it's coming from the lab school, when I get my results?
Yeah, if you're seeing PFOA, that's one of them. That one is more what you're seeing at Carousel. If you're seeing PFHXS and PFOS, that's what we're seeing at labs.
Okay, okay.
But it really depends on your proximity to those too because, I mean, there's, there's also, we just have these, these data points where we know there's a problem in Carousel, we know there's a problem at Latson. There could be other problems out there we don't know. So, I mean...
Up close and clear.
Yeah, if you're pretty close, then I mean, that would be a good education.
And the last thing I wanted to say was that when I saw this in the paper, I scheduled to get a filter from Aqua Science and they're like three months out. And it's like sixteen hundred to two grand to get a filter. That makes the testing look like it's gone.
Is that for your whole house?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So we're... So, uh, the girl behind you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for the lateness and thank you for hearing everyone's concerns.
Could you give us your name for record, please?
Eliana Tucker. Um, so I, I live in a bad spot, I guess we call it, that you're saying is going downstream. I can walk to lab. I do walk to lab at night, though. So I heard about this. I went out and I got gallons of water. And I'm like, okay, this is going quick. So I got five gallon jugs of water. And now I'm, you know, hundreds of dollars into water. I did math. It's gonna be hundreds of dollars a month just to have water to drink and cook with. And I'm still bathing in this water from my well that I don't know if it's bad or not. Plus now the test is hundreds of dollars. People can't just afford that offhand. I mean, it's, it's a burden to pay for all of this just to have safe water to drink. It's scary. So even if I were to be able to get a test, had I not done all of this, then I'm gonna get the test back. If it's high, then what? So now I'm looking at the cost of the filter. I did get a quote from Aqua Science as well. It was twenty-five hundred or more. I can't just work that without, you know, do planning. It's just thrown at me and it's something that I didn't cause. So I guess my question is, what type of help is available? I mean, I, I don't even know if I have safe water to drink and I'm having to spend all this money that I didn't plan to spend. So I don't know what the solution is financially there, but it's scary. I mean, I can walk to this place that you're saying there's three hundred something and it's not safe for my house and I'm downstream.
No, I would say it is a gap in the funding that's currently available to us. I think when Congress was looking to send funding to states, it was to try to get a handle on the public side first. And now there are conversations in Congress about expanding that to private wells as well. This is, it's just kind of, I think, we've been wanting to do this work for close to ten years and we're just finally getting the attention it deserves at the national level and the state level to get the resources to be able to get at least the public side. So I think those are, you know, they don't have an answer for you today, but they're ongoing conversations that I think everybody needs to make their voice heard at the state level.
So even just to start with, I mean, it doesn't fix the problem, but if a test could be provided to, you know, myself and anyone in that proximity over there, that would even be a big help because what if I'm buying this water for no reason? And I don't wanna find out, you know, otherwise, really. I hope I'm buying it for no reason, but...
And just so you know, we're gonna take back all these concerns to our bosses. We all have bosses, right? So we'll make sure that, you know, it's heard. And they're very, you know, top people and talking to help them. So DM, they're here. So, you know, we're very, very concerned you wanna help remove this. Did the people in Oakland get help? Can I need your help?
Yeah, so Oakland, the situation there, I can go into that a bit. So it ultimately did end up being the fire department that was, um, be the source, which we suspected.
Because Sue?
No, we, we, at that time, we mandated that they take, they provide bottled water to the residents in Oakland. And that would have been the case in perpetuity had there not been a water line. And there was actually a water line in the village from a neighboring village of Parisville. Their water line extended to Oakland. It ran right from the fire station, just feeding this new subdivision to the north. But the Oakland water system was to the south. But the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank actually ultimately stepped in and provided a principal forgiveness loan. So basically, they free money to the Parisville Water Department to extend the water line to serve all sixty private wells that were impacted. And there was probably thirty or so houses on that existing water system. So the solution there was a entirely new water system, but it had a lot to do with the circumstances there. It was that availability of a clean water source. But up until that point, that was installed. Once we deemed it was the fire department's responsibility, they took over providing clean water to the residents of Oakland in case.
Now, I don't know, I don't, I don't have direct experience here, but I don't know, maybe coming from help to challenge. If the town were to have a well, an existing public well that was clean, could they make it available for residents such as...
They don't have a water system.
They don't have a water system. But you must have some wells in public buildings now.
I wouldn't drink water in this building.
We just got flushed my water last week.
Now, they're right now...
Do you want a drink of water?
If you bring open in this town, if you send to the lab, it's on private wells. That's why there's a lot of concern. And you're telling me we gotta wait for Congress to make, with the amount of money the state put in the budget this year, I think someone needs to find some money to help someone like her or other people. Because you're saying sixteen hundred suit for a filtration system?
I was quoted twenty-five hundred for the filter. There's already like five hundred in on water just to drink and cook with.
I think you really need to, sooner than later, you know, these people can't wait to find it.
I know. I'm sitting here just thinking the state has spent so much money on these giant cahogs that they put in airports around the country. We don't, the state doesn't have money to help these people test their wells. Like what is going on here?
Don't get me going over the, I'm definitely going to want your name in Congress because I guess I'm gonna haunt you. I'm over there. We're gonna need, if we need testing models here, if, if some kind of program. Because like I said, a lot of people are blue collar or don't have the money down here for these expenses, the way things are going now. Of that shell.
Well, no, and we all, we all, I, I am very anxious to hear from our planner because he's going to worry that with some of you. He's gonna, he is a good one, person. Have your point, question pool, to have our planner on board, just to be the first. Your point, question for, to have our planner on board, just to be the person to see, process, test, that's an excellent thing for us. And I'd like to say to Sue, wish you hadn't left the planning board. Anytime you'd like to come back, please let us know. And I'd also tell you and anybody else listening here that I've been sitting here since December of 2006. This is the first time, and Sue spoke to this, we're on the planning board side. I can't speak to that board. But this is the first time that any folks like you have come to talk to us. And there were, there were concerns years ago about general pollution of the aquifer by what was happening at lab, by the institution of Job Corps.
When septic fails over there and we don't find out about it till months later and the septic has failed twice?
But, well, Sue knows when it fails. I just want to say to everybody and to you, thank you for coming here. We haven't been as nasty as probably some people might have been. Thank you for being here, thank you for listening, and thank you for taking those. And thank you for going back and, who are we here?
I mean, while you're a drink...
Hell, hell, appreciate it, appreciate it.
I'd like to really hear some Bill.
Okay. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mike because being a public work director at a meeting with the...
Why don't you give him a kiss?
Smile, smile.
You've got to take care of that.
Because you're the...
I only have a few things. Well, delivering point, so do they agree with the water sampling protocol? E T P and Maine, they put out, you know, their little brochure. And it's very difficult, as you mentioned. I mean, from keeping the water tested...
You're outside, I'm down. Oh, thank you.
Well, delivering point, it's more of a process than just... So, I would suggest that Ed from receiving, maybe do a tutorial, maybe YouTube tutorial, something that could be shared either by phone or in conjunction with that. So, maybe that with, with a 60. The other alternative is if we were to send out, working with D O A. First, I want to really commend D O A, Department of Health, and D E M for tremendous job. We're all in here. This is about a new beginning. This is about trying to stay together in order to, you know, lead to success. If it's in the past, it's in the past. D O A through this, in legislature, provided, D O A with $100,000 to study Lab Center and writing the RFP in conjunction with D O A and the Contra Pops to make sure that uses that go in there are compatible with the town and Department of Administration. And we only can learn and get evidence. But that would be my suggestion on, on your water sampling. Maybe even, because we're not only analytical now, is an authorized agent, providing on your, on your certification drinking, a separate section to accredited PFAS facilities, right, in addition to that. That's what D E P Maine does. So, you have your certified drinking with a normal well test and a section for PFAS. The other thing, and Maine, just, you know, Maine is a leader in this. I think they were the first to eliminate PFAS, B and PFAS. So, they're a little ahead of the game. Also, it's a little confusing for the average homeowner. So, look at the D E M site and run on the D O A site and have all kinds of dropdown menus. So, maybe take a look at, you know, establishing more of a, you know, question and answer. What is the PFAS section? That's kind of intuitive instead of all the dropdown menus for PFAS. Many people don't even know what this means. You know, the difference, you know, between fluorid, fluoridated carbon and something else is a, you know, French term. So, that would be my suggestion there. Is there any way we can have a third party actually conduct the sampling? If the person or the homeowner doesn't, if we get to the point where you do provide the funding or the opportunity to test this, is there a third party that can go in and test for it? Either through our own analytical, again, these are questions that I'm asking tonight, but between, you know, D O A or Alcoa. As we try, because we are three industries trying to, you know, work together with the community to provide a program. Funding may come later on, this may be a lot easier in the future. But how do we, how do we monitor today? Because, one, we have to figure out what are our baseline conditions for the well homeowners that have wells. And then, once we find the baseline, where do we go for that? Treatment facilities, types of treatment, $2,000 facility that doesn't include the carbon, I mean, that's the, the carbon that needs to be changed probably so often.
$400, $400 a year.
And depending on the level of containment that pops per trillion, it could be more frequent than someone that is maybe just 22. So, we have to understand that that's also a cost at all. But we have to get from A to Z. So, I think baseline sampling is, is where I'd like to concentrate. The second is, again, on your site, just have PFAS-accredited facilities. You're running, and then maybe the ones you send out to Ohio and some other places. The other thing, I just, you know, I might have to be a little bit pointed about where this stuff comes from. It looks what it is, it's in here now. If you want to talk about a little in like, you know, formal way, you put the continuous protective wellhead protection ordinance together. And in that protection ordinance, they have a lot of study on five to 10 years travel time. While this is soluble, will it stay soluble for a period of recharge for five to 10 years? My question to, will it, like T C B, does it mean?
So, yeah, this, this chemical, these chemicals are generally very soluble. But they do bind to soils, if you have like a release area, they will bind to the soils. And then slowly over time, they can leach out if you have like a major release. So, yeah, it really depends. But we have sites, just for, for example, you know, we have some like older fire training facilities or even fuel depots associated with some of the naval sites down in Newport in particular. Those are some of the worst sites that we have. And even, even sites that have been inactive for, at levels much higher, but that have been inactive for 30 years, still have extremely high elevated levels. So, it does persist. And it's generally kind of reaches this equilibrium where, you know, you see the, it stays pretty constant over time and there's just a slow kind of degradation, really through dilution, but the stuff does not break down.
Sure, same. Thank you for that. Scientist going to be all over that. But there is three causes of depression that come along with the well point. And then there's five to 10 year recharge period. So, you know, in my mind, is it today problem or was it the 2017 problem in Oakland? And that may get us to the next level. I'm sure they'll be looking at that. But it could be that finally you're pulling out five year recharge for that particular wellhead. And maybe that is the cause, but again, that's, that's going forward. But there's little mechanics, not just, you know, downhill. And aquifer is really, you know, kind of tricky. You have to recharge, you know, compression and many little things that we need to look at to make sure if it's a yesterday problem and the spigot is shut off or is it a today problem?
Yeah, and it's tough, tough to do with the two data points we have. These have a low and high. We don't know if we're on the downward trend or the upward trend.
And Phoenix House, how, you said it was 100 foot well, the well depth is also important. How deep is that Phoenix?
Phoenix House well is deeper. So, I don't know the full depth, but these wells are shallow and the Phoenix House well is deeper, which most homeowner wells would be on the upper end. They're not going to be as shallow as the rest of us.
So, I mean, that cone of depression could be pulling out the surface into that well now five years as that recharge area comes in. So, that's why the 100, that could be, the bull well, if it was a past spill and it's getting into that wellhead now because of those five to 10 year recharge periods. We talked about a point contact. Again, the council's been on front with this, engaging the folks, very learning. And again, with D E, D E M, D O H, and D O A, I've worked with the council. The council wants to act as a liaison. For me, I'd be happy to do that. We just need the three contacts because we're going to have three different agencies. And I think the question was posed by the public, you know, who do we ask questions? So, they may be right on, right off with D O A. I can try to triage those. So, if we get contacts from three agencies, we're going to do the council, then I can try to triage some of the question. And timeline for the next testing. So, so Quants is on the hook to continue testing and provide remedial plan by January? Is that true? Or remedial action plan, or remedial plan for this by January?
So, they're, we're supposed to finalize the consent agreement, which is the, the plan. And then it like, it doesn't mean that treatment will be installed by January.
Right, and it could be many things. It could be point service treatment, it could be point of well treatment, or it can be some kind of dilution or mix. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, just so we know when we were planning for the future, the point of solution will be, okay, bills, we'll have to put a system in to remediate this. Point of well may be what's happened across the country, very expensive, millions of dollars. The well provider actually has a system to efficiently dilute or use, you know, some mechanisms to remove it, then distribute it throughout the usage. So, this may be a short-term and a long-term decision for the lab center as that goes out.
Yes, there, and there's, there's federal funding from the State Revenue Fund and through EPA grants that are available for treatment systems. What Quants is looking at right now are pointers, what you call point of service, they're also called point of entry. So, a treatment unit on each building, which they believe can happen quicker and less expensively than a treatment system on the wells themselves. But regardless, they have to go through the approval process and, and all of that. So, we haven't received that from them yet, but we expect to very soon.
And a notice to the folks around, we're, we're actually, I'm asking that it also contains specific authorized, accredited testing. It's great that Rhode Island and Rhode Island, Rhode Island, that they do this. But again, along with that, the instructions, which is incredibly different, put detail to those books. I think at that point, who will be consolidating all this information? Will be right on with Department of Health to determine what the baseline conditions of these private wells are if the information is forward to you?
So, when we get the private well results, we share them with D E M for as far as like their information for potential investigation. But as far as communicating with homeowners about interpreting their results and potential next steps, that is something that we can do, our private well program in Ridow. Also, we have a cooperative agreement with the University of Rhode Island, a cooperative extension program. And they can also help with interpretation and answering questions as well.
Okay, my final question is, is kind of a combination. So, D E P and Maine has a program where, you know, the folks are funded for the sampling if they use an authorized agent on the list. And there's action against the person, person, the corporation that resulted in this. If the testing proves that is the fire academy, which is a state, you know, under the state or Allen, can we press the legislature this year and then move in a direction where K I D is set up? Where this fund can be accessed by those people that have already put the money in for not only testing but for remediation? Where they then can kind of claim against that one as an action, enforcement action that you would do, for instance, on hazardous materials. Because D E M has a section that does that, correct? That, that assesses fines violations?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Terry gave, used to be ahead of his direct amount.
Yep.
So, maybe Terry could put a program together where if they were fined, the fines can be put in this K I D. And then those fine folks can ask for reimbursement with our documentation.
Yes, I, I mean, I think in general, like what you just described is one of the options on the table for these sort of things moving forward. But then there's also, you know, if there is a potentially responsible party, you know, typically, if PFAS just recently became hazardous stuff, then so like my office can now, you know, potentially go after responsible parties where perhaps we really didn't have that authority.
Sure.
And so, that's going to be part of this too, is the future moving forward. Like if the responsible party, we may require them to do that remediation you're talking about. But yeah, in this case, I don't know what this situation here actually looked like. I can't say for sure. But all those options I think are...
One last question on the investigation front. The investigation is inherently within the well and the oil fields. Maybe we're enjoying a few well test runs, observations. Will we need actually testing of the equipment that's in, actually the fire academy uses? To see whether or not the equipment was previously contaminated that had been used? Or is there any inside investigation of the facility itself to determine if, of course, contamination of drugs?
Yeah, so not, not to date. But I will say there have been, some of, some other states have connected. In particular, has done extensive pilot testing of sampling actually used apartment. So, they'll actually take a pumper truck that had a foam concentrate tank that's no longer in use and they'll rinse it out and then test the rinse water. And they, so there's been some studies into the levels of that, that contamination that's left behind and how many cycles it would take, even, even actively looking at, trying to find different products to remove that and clean it. They were able to do it, but it was extremely costly. And it generated a lot of waste that was not really a good place to dispose of. So, but yeah, I don't, I don't know if that will be part of, in the future, if that would be part of an investigation. I mean, to date, we've mostly been dealing with pretty clear sources. Like in Oakland, the fire station had numerous containers of foam concentrate just kind of stacked half haphazardly in the garage. And the trench drains in the garage were connected to their leach field. So, it was just a disaster waiting to happen, but no one thought any of it at the time because it's, it's just so...
So, it wasn't a thing before, it's a thing.
Yeah.
So, the concentrations there, was it, was it more than 236 per trillion or more than 1,000? That's interesting.
In the groundwater at the fire station itself, 1,000.
1,000.
But in the well, it was on par here, it was around 200 or similar in that area. Yeah, in, in one of the public wells. Some of the private wells were actually higher. They were even around 500.
Because that's, you know, the other half of this equation is not just the mediations terms and the turn and that plus it on. So, just to close this, it's either a past problem or an ongoing problem that goes on. That's all I have right now. Again, thank you, everyone. Tremendous, tremendous panel. Thank you. Tremendous amount of information. I personally appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I have to say one more thing. You, you need to, I hope you all realize that we are limited in our ability to respond to most... I was going to say most everything, except tax collection. She's over. Doesn't miss anything. But what I want to say is that you may or not make or may not know, we have no town engineer, we have no town engineer. We have only a part-time planner who basically works five days a week and thing most of the time, if not weekends too. So, Bill, thank you for...
Well, that's he being some kind of point person here. I wanted to point out, he is a part-time planner.
That's what I mean, is part-time.
But he doesn't have any more room in his part-time schedule to do any of this, so...
Dory, Dory, speak.
Dory Gorman, actually, D E M A. I was wondering if, so the notification hasn't gone out for testing for the people that are in that area of the well, so that, that letter's going out. So, then that would generate out a whole other, would you be willing to come back out to talk to those residents?
Yeah, potentially. So, we have been planning on a communication strategy for community meetings around PFAS. So, we're actively working on that strategy and so that is a potential...
Because I was asked to put something on social media, which I have very limited capacity. I'm also part-time. And so, I feel like social media is a very difficult thing if you're not always on it and the right messaging and whatnot.
It's a very complicated topic.
Very complicated topic. So, it's, I could really use some assistance with, with that, keeping on top of it. You have to keep on top of it.
We still keep on the town website.
Right.
I think there is, I think there is. I understand there is. But I do, as Bill did, I think we all do, thank you for coming here. And I also want to say whoever is up there at state level that's agreed to a master plan for uses at lab, finally, who knows? I mean, it's something that's been lacking and I'm happy to hear that that's happening. Thank you, Bill. What plays? We have a very good plan, but we just can't have them do everything. Me and Lynn together can just run everything. Thank you, very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.